We have Brother Eric Graham with us. If you would, please, sir, lead us in the invocation. And Commissioner McCam, the pledges?
Father God, we thank you so much for your goodness. We just thank you for the blessings that we get to enjoy, the quality of life we have in Henderson County. We thank you for those that you've put in leadership positions and ask that you just grant them great discernment. We thank you for our peace officers and our public servants. I just pray that you'd give them just special protection and special blessings in their personal lives and their households. And we just thank you for it. We just thank you for the goodness that we enjoy here and pray that you'll just continue to keep us in a blessable state that we might continue to be blessed. And we thank you for it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in forty six hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to take this flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Brother Graham. Thank you. Well, again, I would like to welcome everyone to Commissioners Court. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order at 9:01. Are there any citizens's comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on March the first, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing none, Judge, I move we approve the Commissioners Court regular session, March first, 2022, minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court of March the first, 2022, as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on minutes from previously held special meeting of Commissioners Court on March the third, 2022. This meeting was held for a single purpose of calling for the next round of the elections. Entertain a motion if there's no comments.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes from the previously held special meeting of Commissioners Court on March third, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes from the special meeting of March third, 2022, as presented. All those in favor of the motion? All of those opposed and abstaining? Passes three oh with Commissioners one and four abstaining. Oh, excuse me, two and four abstaining. Item number three, consider and take action to accept the donation of sixty-four TASER cartridges, eleven TASER cartridges, and five TASER holsters, and ten TASER X26P batteries from the Athens Police Department to the Sheriff's Office. Chief?
Good morning, Court. The TASER cartridges are listed twice. The City of Athens Police Department has updated their TASER to a later version, and these are no longer compatible with the new version that they've gotten. They're serviceable, they're good. I think the expiration date is in December, so that gives us another year. We were on a task for having to purchase some gear, so this satisfies that. This will end up saving us about thirty-six hundred. But the TASER cartridges are listed twice. Sixty-four of the TASER cartridges are live cartridges. They're twenty-foot, twenty-one-foot deployable. They're the live ones that they carry on patrol. The eleven are training cartridges. So annually or within its prescribed amount of time, every deputy that carries a TASER has to be recertified on it. And that's what those training cartridges are used for. Of course, the holsters and the batteries, the batteries are kind of the brains of those things, so they record all the information. So when they start going bad, those are quite expensive. So City of Athens is helping us out quite a bit.
Questions for the chief? I would say thank you to our friends at the City of Athens.
Absolutely.
Given they are upgrading and since they're going to discharge or discard these to us
Right.
through this donation. That's fantastic. Any other comments? Entertain a motion?
I make the motion to accept the donation of the TASER holsters and batteries from the Athens Police Department, the Sheriff's Office.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson, to accept the donation of TASER holsters, TASER holsters and cartridges from the City of Athens, the Police Department of the City of Athens. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you, Chief. Item number four is consider and take action on a notice of joint and special election to adopt or reject the proposed constitutional amendments as submitted by the eighty-seventh Legislature Special Session of the State of Texas to be held on May seventh, 2022. And we have Ms. Lucky with us, our Elections Administrator.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
I'm bringing in this morning a notice of election for May seventh, and I have the locations that we selected for that. I just want to get this set so we can move forward getting everything planned because May's going to be a busy month. So we have eleven locations, no, ten locations and four early voting sites. I have, then the next item's going to be the contracts. So really, the main locations that have local elections going on are the Seven Points, Malakoff, Crossroads, Gunbarrel, Chandler, Brownsboro, and Athens. So, but we went ahead and did LaRue just to cover that corner of the county.
Questions for Ms. Lucky? Through this action here, it's actually the setting of the locations.
Yes.
What we have here before. So this is calling for it.
And the cities are needing this also, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was on board to get this ready to go so they can do what they need to do for their postings. We have several bonds coming up. Three schools are having bonds. We have several cities having elections. The sales tax in the City of Athens, so.
And this being May seventh, this isn't a part of the state runoff elections. This is a complete different set.
Right. So May twenty-fourth, they're going to overlap, I mean, so May twenty-fourth, we will have a runoff. And so we'll have to get ready for that, but.
Questions, comments? Entertain a motion with the judge's authorization to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the notice of joint special election to adopt or reject the proposed constitutional amendments as submitted by the eighty-seventh Legislature Special Session of the State of Texas to be held on May the seventh, 2022, with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number five is consider and take action on interlocal agreements between Henderson County and Maybank ISD, Brownsboro ISD, Crossroads ISD, the City of Athens, City of Chandler, the City of Seven Points, and Gunbarrel City for the conducting of the May seventh, 2022 elections. Ms. Lucky?
So all of these entities have reached out to us and want us to conduct their elections in conjunction with ours. In this group, I still have three more that I'll bring to court later. They haven't signed their contract, but it's a standard contract. There's some new wording about the SB one from December, just on central counting and stuff like that. So we added that as recommended by the state, but it's our standard contract, standard rates.
Okay. Questions, comments?
These that move it to the school location, do they incur some of the costs?
Yes. So Brownsboro ISD wanted to be an early voting location, and they're going to pay for the staff to hold that election there. It's not going to be, they're still paying the rental on the equipment and everything. There won't be anything additional there, but, and I've already lined out that judge to work it. Their secretary's going to be the clerk, so, but they're paying for that. They're paying extra.
Is, so, Maybank is going to resident, or Maybank ISD residents that are in Henderson County are going to be able to vote at?
So where, all three counties are doing their own contract with Maybank ISD. Because of the constitutional amendments on there, it was going to be really hard to separate that because people, it would confuse the voters. So if you're a Kaufman County resident, you'll go to Kaufman County. If you're Henderson County, you'll come here. And Van Zant County will go to Van Zant County. Now, Brownsboro, we are allowing the Van Zant County residents for Brownsboro ISD to come here because there's like fifty voters. So they will check in here if they want to vote on that bond election. So, and we can facilitate them.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, if we get a motion to take action with the judge's signature? Oh, excuse me, all necessary signatures. It takes three signatures on this one. This is the administrator, the county attorney, and the county judge.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the interlocal agreements between Henderson County and Maybank ISD, Brownsboro ISD, Crossroads ISD, City of Athens, City of Chandler, City of Seven Points, and Gunbarrel City for the conducting of the May seventh, 2022 elections with all necessary signatures authorized. Any further comments? I do have one question. Since we're having two different elections in close proximity, can you speak about the equipment usage? We're going to have plenty of equipment.
Yes. So the biggest concern, and we purchased extra media sticks for that in December because we knew this was coming up, so that's covered. So we're fine. I think I can split it well enough. So it's going to be some hustling, but it'll work. It's okay.
Okay.
Thank you for all you do.
All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We are still three minutes shy for our public hearing, so we will move on to item number nine, which is to consider and take action on refund requests for overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector. And we have Ms. Goodall with us this morning.
Good morning. This is two refund requests that we have. One is going to be for the ARB, and then the other one was for CoreLogic. It was paid in air. The homeowner does not have a mortgage and wished to pay their taxes themselves.
Questions, comments? Doesn't seem we have the same volume this year of returns as we had in previous years.
I know it.
Lucky, I guess?
And I guess. Maybe they got the pack together.
Yeah. There's a lot of accounts when it comes to CoreLogic.
Yes.
So. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the refund request for overpayment of taxes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the refund request for overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number two, Ms. Bieber.
Good morning, Court. This here policy is going to be for our employees to sign a document stating that if they have missed their Catapult Health Service appointment that they make themselves, or they are no show, that it would not fall on the responsibility of the county to pay for their missed appointment fee of a hundred and eighty dollars. This would push the responsibility down on the employee to pay that hundred and eighty-dollar fee out of payroll deduct. This Catapult Health Clinic is to suffice their wellness incentive program that we implied, implemented, I guess. They're required to get an annual physical and take a tobacco cessation course or certify as a non-tobacco user, and this will suffice one of them.
Questions?
Are we giving them, are we giving them any time to cancel ahead?
Yes, sir. So in the policy, in the first doc, first paragraph, it says they have up to forty-eight hours before time to cancel it. Yes, sir. And I have a waiting list already started with about eight employees that are looking for appointments.
We didn't have this policy last year.
We did not. And it cost us about eighteen hundred dollars.
Otherwise, this is free to the employees?
It is free to the employees. It's ran through their insurance, so it's counted as an annual physical. So those are free, covered under the insurance. Now they can have as many as they want. It used to only be one annual physical for free a year. Now there's no limit on annual physicals on the insurance. And then I also have a page, that second document in your backup. It's for extenuating circumstances, and they are to request that through my office to be put on the agenda for the Commissioners Court if there was an extenuating circumstance that came up and they were able, not able to make their appointment in order to get that fee waived. But that would be at the court's discretion.
I think that forty-eight hours is ample time from if they decide they don't want to go from the cancel.
Yes, sir.
And then us allowing, you know, extenuating circumstances.
Right. My only thing for that would be like a car accident or a death, or I list those on the form. There's like five or six.
I mean, that's, that's ten slots last year that they didn't show up for that we could have easily put somebody into.
If we would have known ahead. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
If this passes today, when do you want us to get them to sign it immediately?
Yes, so they'll sign immediately if this does pass today. I've already received the list from Catapult Health of employees who have appointments because all twenty spaces are already, a hundred and twenty spaces are already filled. And so what I'll do is I will take it out and distribute, have them sign it, so then I have it in my office, ready to go.
Okay. How many do we have signed up? How many clinics do we have?
We have two clinics, one here at the Annex Building and one at the Sheriff's Office. And sixty here are for the Annex Building and then sixty at the Sheriff's Office, and all appointments are already filled.
I think they were filled on the first day, weren't they?
I'm sorry? Yes. Within four hours, the appointments were filled.
Any other comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the policy concerning missed appointments for employee Catapult Health Clinics as a part of the health insurance incentive program.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley, to set the policy concerning missed appointments for the employee Catapult Health Clinics as a part of the health insurance incentive program. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. And now we have, it is nine eighteen, so we will move back up to item six, which is a public hearing to be held at nine fifteen for the establishment of a Henderson County property assessed clean energy program, otherwise known as PACE. This is an opportunity at this time so that individuals may come forward and speak in favor or against the proposed program. We ask that you give your name and address for the record, and then you will be given three minutes to speak. Can we have a motion to move into public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tulley, to move into public hearing at nine eighteen. All those in favor of the motion? We are now in public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this time? Okay, if you would, please, ma'am, come forward, give your name and address, and then again, we will be, excuse me, we'll allow you three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Linda Rankin. I'm from Gunbarrel City, and I live at 184 Ocean Drive in Gunbarrel. I am very excited to see that we are setting an example of having a better energy program in our county. I'm extremely happy that our EDC has taken the initiative to put in some of the better green energy standards that we needed in our town. I'm hoping that we set the example for the rest of the cities in that we want to be, we want to be vigilant in how we maintain our buildings, the cost of our buildings. And I think the PACE program is one of those activities that we can use and make better. So thank you very much for considering this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Michael Fladmark. I'm city council with the City of Tool, and my address is 600 Winding Shore Drive, Tool, Texas. And I'm familiar with the Texas PACE program, having worked with it in Dallas County and the City of Dallas. And it's also been established in our adjoining county of Navarro. And it brings the opportunity for existing commercial businesses and nonprofits to be able to be able to install energy and water-efficient equipment and upgrades to make them energy-efficient and meet green incentives that I hope that the county continues to move forward on. And so I just, I'm in full support of this program, and I appreciate very much that the county is moving forward with it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joni Aler, and I am the Economic Development Director for the City of Athens. Do you need my home address?
Please.
It's 6605 FM 1803 in Athens. I just wanted to state that the City of Athens is in favor of this initiative. It's a very valuable tool, especially in a situation like the downtown square of Athens is in. We have a number of older buildings that have been neglected by their landlords or property owners, and they're starting to change hands. And by doing that, it is opening them to be renovated, brought up to current code, and have some of these green energy initiatives put in place. This financing, because it attaches to the building, is very favorable to commercial development. So I do truly hope that you consider passing this initiative.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Scales. I live at 148 Robin Hood Way in Gunbarrel City, and I am the mayor of Gunbarrel City. I just want to thank y'all for considering this. I know that y'all have heard all about it. You've been through some explanations from the people who direct the PACE program, and I just want to thank y'all for the consideration. I do support this program 100%. I do think it's good for the entire county and will help us revitalize a lot of the existing older buildings that need this kind of support. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the subject matter? I will make one last call. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the matter of the establishment of the PACE program? Seeing that we have no one else wishing to speak, we'll entertain a motion to close public hearing at 9:24.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioners Spivey, seconded by Commissioner Tully to close public hearing at 9:24. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. And we will move to item seven, which is consider and take action on a resolution establishing Henderson County PACE program. And, Court, this is the last step in this process, reminding everyone, this has been several months in the making, a lot of discussions, a workshop, and a couple of court hearings where we continue to run the PACE authority, I'm just looking for Charlene, there she is in the back, continuing to run them through their hoops. I would ask our county attorney and the PACE authority if y'all would come forward. That way, if the Court has any further questions about this, and we do have our tax assessor collector here, Ms. Peggy Goodall, as well, if we wish to bring her into the discussion.
Good morning. I'm Charlene Hidinger, 40 Pascal Lane, Austin, Texas.
We coordinated colors.
Y'all did. Y'all did. If you would, one quick time for the public, what we want to do, we understand this is the Court. This is a financing mechanism that is made available to make upgrades to these older properties and such to help become more energy-efficient. That is the purpose of the PACE program. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. Court, we have been through this numerous times, numerous discussions. Do you have any questions?
I think one of the other deals that we need to also tell the public is that if there was a building there, had been a building there, and there's a piece of concrete there now, but a new building would qualify for the PACE program. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. The statute does not prohibit new construction. It's silent about new construction, but it has a prohibition on the use of PACE on undeveloped lots or lots undergoing development. And so we require that the owner demonstrate that there was or is a structure, preferably vertical, that uses or used power that is recognized by the CAD as an improvement. Those three things, we think, make it very clear that it was developed. If there is no development, we require that some development, meeting those three conditions, be made to the property before it will be eligible for PACE.
So they could buy a piece of property with an old building on it and tear that building down and start anew and still be qualified for the PACE program.
Yes, sir. After many meetings with many lawyers, everyone came to the conclusion that once a property's developed, it's not really undeveloped. So once it's developed, then people can move forward, and in many communities, infill is important to the economic development of the community. If what's there just makes no sense in maintaining, why not allow this if it satisfies the statute? I think there may be an effort to try and change the statute, to get rid of this prohibition or to clarify it somewhat so we know what the legislature intended, but we are extremely conservative until that happens.
And this is only commercial, industrial, and large multifamily above five units?
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't cost the county anything?
That is absolutely critical. There is no impact on the taxpayers. It's budget-neutral, does not require staffing of any kind other than oversight through the judge's office, and we will, any cost that the county incurs can and should be reimbursed.
And through this process, we have had a great deal of discussion with our tax attorneys as well in this. Clint, would you like to speak to some of that?
Yes, and I think, you know, they've, I almost hate to say it, expressed some concern because I really don't think it's near as bad as it sounds, and they are okay with the program. And so we talked about that at the last meeting two weeks ago, but yes, I think they are on board and comfortable with the program. We will have to amend our contract with our tax collection firm, not in any hurry to do that. Wouldn't necessarily have to do that unless we had a default, but we would have to amend the contract to include the collection of the PACE delinquencies if there were ever any delinquencies. But again, that's a minor deal.
Well, I think one thing's important is that many of the things we discuss over time, seems like there's going to be this great rush of the process beginning. We have PACE loans opening up everywhere. That is not truly the case in this. These are very slow in proceeding. Would you speak something to that, Charlene?
Yes, sir. I try to set expectations with the local governments that you may wait a while before you see any activity on PACE, even where there are property owners expressing interest. Real estate deals take about a year, and we have found that we have to go out and train the plumbers, electricians, HVAC mechanical, roofers. They don't know about the program, so they can't tell their customers until they do. Where we work with economic development, which is clearly the case in Henderson County, there will be education and outreach more readily to property owners. People need to hear this three times before the light bulb will go off. It sounds too good to be true. It's not something that just people catch on to the first time, and they're going to need to understand the program, just as all of you have had to understand it before you're comfortable in moving forward. So it will take some time. As an example, Judge Whitley in Tarrant County had me come up several times. He put me through the ropes with his staff. He finally decided, okay, we're ready, met with the Commissioners. They adopted the program, and 18 months later, they had their first PACE project. And that year, half of the PACE projects that closed in Texas closed in Tarrant County. That wasn't a very big number, but it takes a while to catch on. It's going to be up to the property owner to decide to use this. It's up to the property owner to find their own lender, and if there's a mortgage on the property, they need the written consent of their mortgagee, and they have to have contractors who put a project together that's acceptable to a Texas PE. So there's a lot of work that goes into these, and sometimes people just don't want to bother with it, but where they do, it can make buildings that would have been impossible to retrofit otherwise come back to life.
Thoughts, questions, comments, Court?
How is the Tax Assessor Collector involved in this process, if you have any?
She is not. This was written in Texas very differently than in other states, so to minimally impact her office, if for any reason there was a default, you might decide to cancel the program, but she would be notified, and then it would be up to her office to decide how involved they want to be. But this is really designed for the default tax law firm to do the same amount of work that they would otherwise do. So probably some coordination, but these don't go on the tax bill. The installments don't go on the tax bill like they do in other states. We've done everything we can to minimize the impact of this on the county and your team.
We've had representatives from Gunbarrel and Athens and Tool, but we've also had some other cities that have been for the PACE program also.
There has. We have received emails and letters, the City of Trinidad, Malakoff, and a few others. There's, as far as the municipalities go, which would be the focal point of much of this, there seems to be a great deal of support out in the community for it. Any other questions or comments?
I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that has gone into this. It's much, it's just very rewarding to serve a local government that's done its homework and made an intentional decision. It really affects the ability to bring the program to the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, given this discussion, if there's no further questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the resolution establishing the Henderson County PACE program. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. And we're going to move to item eight, which is consider and take action on a professional services agreement with the Texas Property-Assessed Clean Energy Authority. And again, Charlene, this part is actually the administration of the program, correct?
Yes, sir. This gives us the authority to administer the program on behalf of the county and sets a scope of services that defines and sets a high bar for our services to you.
How will people outside that haven't been watching the Court, I know we have big numbers, but how will they find out about the program? Will the cities put out information?
We will, we welcome opportunities to outreach. On our website, there will be a Henderson County webpage. There's a map of Texas. The county will be put in blue, and then there's a link to the county. We will do as much education and outreach as we can. I'm very encouraged by a number of conversations I've had with economic development people who are excited about it. That makes a huge difference for us. If you have, in your precincts, chambers of commerce, rotary clubs, other business organizations, or nonprofit organizations that you would like us to present to, I would really appreciate that information. It really is just going to come down to getting out there, and after COVID, we've really got to start over with that. And so as people start to meet again in person, we can also do Zoom calls, but it's so much better to meet in person. So if you have groups you'd like us to visit, please let me know.
And there is a certain amount of outreach and education to the lending institutions, is that correct?
They're a little harder to get together and get to meet, but they are critical to the success of this program. And again, any suggestions for who we should meet with, we welcome that. So right across the street, you've got Prosperity Bank. Prosperity has granted consent in several cases, so they've got folks that are beginning to understand it. Other banks are coming on board. We've had three banks, actually, well, two banks that have funded PACE projects, one that's in the pipeline for the third, so it's starting to happen. This is actually a great time for the county to create the program because things are really, the ball is starting to roll on a lot of these. But again, I welcome all opportunities to know who to talk to, and we will do our very best on that.
Any other questions or comments concerning this professional services agreement? Clint, you reviewed it.
I've reviewed it. Don't have any issues with it. Approved it already, so it's good to go.
Well, if there's no further comments or questions, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
With the judges?
With the judges' signature to authorize.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the professional services agreement with the Texas Property-Assessed Clean Energy Authority with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, I believe we left off at item 11. Item 11 is consider and take action on an interlocal agreement with the City of Trinidad for labor and equipment use only for the hauling of millings, various road repairs, and the removal of overgrowth on both sides of the road from the corner of West Street and West Eaton Street located in Precinct 1. Commissioner?
Yes, Court. First, the city, I mean, the cemetery of Trinidad Board came to me, a member, and wanted us to come trim up the roads going to the cemetery, but I realized it was a city road, so I spoke with them, and I have their minutes where they asked for this, and they also wanted some more. They wanted some milling towed and some laden on some roads, so I decided just to do a two-year interlocal agreement with them for $5,000 of labor and equipment use per year.
Okay. Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve an interlocal agreement between Henderson County Precinct 1 and the City of Trinidad for a two-year agreement for labor and equipment use only, starting March 15, 2022, and ending March 1, 2024.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the two-year interlocal agreement with the City of Trinidad as presented, with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 12 is consider and take action to enter into a two-year interlocal agreement for labor and equipment use with the City of Maybank located in Precinct 2. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge and Court. I'll have probably about three or four more of these come in, but this is the same as Precinct 1 did. This is a two-year interlocal agreement for labor and equipment with the City of Maybank for two years, expiring December 31, 2023.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I move that we accept this two-year interlocal agreement for labor and equipment use with the City of Maybank located in Precinct 2, expiring December 31, 2023.
Signatur.
With the judge's authorization to sign.
Motion, we have a second. Sorry, you threw me there. Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the two-year interlocal agreement for labor and equipment use with the City of Maybank as presented with the judge's authorization to sign. Although, any questions or comments? All those in All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 13, consider and take action to accept a donation of land and accompanying deed to a 0.07 acre tract of land in the J.R. Pritchett survey, abstract 918, from Walter Haregrove, located in precinct four. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court. This is a small strip of land that's two foot wide and 1,500 foot long that runs along the county right-of-way of County Road 4803. And that roadway is already deeded to the county back in, I think, 1970, so early 70s. And actually, this two-foot strip was put in as a buffer, like we see in a lot of subdivisions, to keep approachment on roadway. Well, this gentleman, he's wanting to do away with this two-foot right-of-way and donate it into the county's deed of the roadway. So that will allow anybody outside that two-year strip, two-foot strip, to be able to build a roadway or anything into the county road. And we've seen issues before in a lot of subdivisions and stuff, so it really, it opens it up for development and stuff. And when we do a deal like this, because normally we don't accept land from anybody, but a two-foot strip, we decided to put this on the agenda and see where we go.
Questions for the commissioner?
Would that two-foot strip prohibit anybody from being able to put a cover into the driveway?
Yes, it would if he enforced it, but I think there is a couple of driveways, and he hasn't really enforced it. It's been so many years, and he's getting up into his later years, and don't want his kids to have to deal with anything. So he just wants to get rid of the strip of land and open it up to anybody that joins it without having to go through the troubles.
Our Indian County Attorney can speak. We've had several instances where these buffer zones become an issue, and this is a way to eliminate that issue in this location.
I guess what I believe, it's actually outside of our easement area.
Yes.
It's a little bit different than what that sounds. Sometimes these are actually called an inner easement area, which is a completely different scenario than what we've got here, which is just outside our easement area. Nevertheless, it's a two-foot strip of land. It's also a unique situation. We don't do a lot of these. It's a unique situation in that we already own the roadbanks. Most of our roads, as you guys know, that we do not own the roadbanks under most of our roads. We just have easements across those, but this will be actually already on the roadbanks. It makes sense to examine the two-foot strip and make them all empty.
If we didn't own the roadbanks, it'd be easier for him just to deed it back to the property, wouldn't it, instead of deeding it to the county?
Right.
But since we have the roadbanks, this would just give us two more feet.
Right. And we really don't want to get into business of owning two-foot strips of land in our easements or right-of-ways around our roads. And that's the biggest issue there.
Yeah. 99% of the county roads, if not 99.5% of the county roads, are considered prescriptive easement roads. We do not own the property. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation of land for the 0.07 acre tract from Walter Haregrove.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to accept the donation of land and accompanying deed to a 0.07 acre tract of land from Walter Haregrove, located in precinct four. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Item 14, consider and take action to accept the award for the 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application. Ms. Brown?
Yes, good morning, Court. Today, we are accepting the award for the Texas, the 2122 Texas Community Development Block Grant. This was an application that we applied for, that Henderson County will serve as a pass-through for this funding for the Crescent Heights Water District. The amount of our award is $350,000 with a match of $17,500 that will be provided by the Crescent Heights Water District. This funding was applied for to provide improvements along, it's for water line replacement along County Road 201208, FM 753, County Road 1405, and Highway 31. We do have representatives from both Crescent Heights and grant works that assisted with the application. We have Rachel virtually, and Shawna is with us in the courtroom, if you have any questions.
Commissioner Spivey, this is in your precinct.
Yes, we've been working on this before I was commissioner. I helped with Commissioner Thomas with the selection of the committee, so I'm pretty, I'm really aware of it, and I've been keeping up with Crescent Heights also.
This court took action of...
This has been over a year.
Over a year ago.
I believe March is the last time we took action, may have been, I know March, '21, so a year later.
Well, in this process, that was to be able to begin going after this grant, and this is through the Community Development Block Grants, which we historically have used to assist. Our sponsorship, we use about, once every three years, I believe, is when the points process builds up enough to assist our rural water corporations. And that's what we're continuing with this, is actually accepting that award and beginning that process.
Yes.
Is it strictly a pass-through, or do we have to handle the billing, I mean, payment of bills?
It's...
Strictly a pass-through?
Yes.
In this situation, years and years ago, the first one we did when I was on the court, the court acted where it was paying the bills. And we learned from that instance that we need to make this a pass-through because there is quite an amount of work that is done in the billing and the verification, so forth and so on, that goes on, that actually, the individuals that we are sponsoring, we feel like that that should be a part of what they do. But we have to meet all of those marks so that there are any, we do not, you'll get tired of hearing this, disallowed costs, because those disallowed costs will fall to, in this case, we won't, Crescent Heights, but ultimately Henderson County is responsible for those, since we are the applicant. So we want to make sure that every i is dotted and t's are crossed.
Does the county audit the grant, or is that from outside auditors to come in and do the auditing on the monies?
Yes, so if it was reviewed, it would be reviewed by the outside. And then my involvement will continue to be, I will have review of the documentation that's being turned in, and that is the only responsibility we have, though, since it still is passing through us, I will be, have eyes on it.
Any other thoughts or questions, comments? Well, hearing none, can we have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to accept the award for the 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application to Crescent Heights Water District, located in precinct one, with the judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tulley, to accept the award for the 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application for Crescent Water, Crescent Heights Water Supply Corporation, located in precinct one, with the judge's authorization to sign. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item 15, receive financial reports. We have in our backup the combined county district and JP financials. Those are available for viewing after court by the public if you so choose in county clerk's office. Item 16 is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. And we'll have Mr. Bynum with us.
Yes, Court. I have the payroll distribution totals for bi-weekly number five. I need to get it approved, if I can, please.
Questions, comments?
I move to approve payroll dispersment total for bi-weekly number five.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the payroll dispersment totals for bi-weekly number five, as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Yes, thank you, Court. And then I also have the payroll for our elections, March elections, to get approved as well. And it's my understanding this is all of them. We don't have any more.
You guarantee that?
No guarantee, but, for March, anyway.
Now, this total is the reimbursable cost to us?
Yes, that'd be correct.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the March election payroll bills or dispersments in the amount of $18,093.92. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court. I don't have any cash sheets for today.
Thank you. Item 17 is consider and take action on submitted contracts. We have none of those. And item 18 is consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits, and we have a couple. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, I have a right-of-way permit for Crescent Heights Water District on a new tapping line, service line to a new house being moved in at 8363 County Road 1406. It's 10 inches from the edge of the road and 36 inches deep, and they will fix it, return it back to the way they found it when they're finished.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the right-of-way permit for Crescent Heights Water to install a new tap and meter service line at 8363 County Road 1406, located in precinct one, with the commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the right-of-way permit with Crescent Heights Water Supply Corporation for a tap and meter install on County Road 1406, with the commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Commissioner?
I have one from Bethel Ash Water Supply Company. It's a road bore under 39, County Road 3919, 5861, County Road 3918. It's 120 feet total, private to private.
Sorry, Commissioner, is that 18 or 19?
3919.
19, okay. Questions for the commissioner? Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the notice of proposed utility line activity for Bethel Ash Water Supply for a road bore under County Road 3919 at 5861, County Road 3919.
Second.
With your authorization?
Yes, with the commissioner's authorization to sign.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the right-of-way agreement with Bethel Ash Water Supply Corporation for a road bore at 5861, County Road 3919, with the commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 19, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Lee?
Yes, so these are all for 2021. I'm sure you noticed there are a few in there on these salaries where I have some of those payroll pools. Majority of this, of course, is from the sheriff's department, the additional expense we have on hours that are outside of the plan, along with fuel prices and so many inmates that our apparatus supply has gone up, our medical care has gone up. Of course, at the same time, it's generating a lot of revenues. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Lee? We'll probably have a few more stragglers.
I'm sure I can.
But we are coming to an end on the 2021. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
How about do we approve the budget amendments for 2021?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the 2021 budget amendments as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 20 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, we have two sets. First set is fiscal year 2021, in the amount of $16,332.95.
Questions concerning the 21 bills?
We're getting close to the end of 21 of them. The phases get shorter and shorter.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pay the 2021 bills in the amount of $16,332.95.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the fiscal year 2021 bills in the amount of $16,332.95. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
So we have fiscal year 2022, in the amount of $777,967.16.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none, Judge.
Commissioner McCam?
None.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
We'll make a quick statement on the larger-than-normal. We have our appraisal district bill, and here there's a payoff of, early payoff of a piece of equipment that is what contributed to this higher amount. Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2022 fiscal bills of $777,967.16. Hard to say that, but no.
It is, isn't it?
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $777,967.16. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Item 21 is consider and take action on submitted plaits.
We have four plaits today, one in precinct one, two in precinct two, and one in precinct four. All these are paves.
All right. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, yes, Court. This one is pretty simple. It's taken two lots, four lots, and making two, and Meeks Deepwater Cove, I think it's called, no, Meeks Deepwater Resort. There's four lots, and they're making two. There is lot 13 and 14, and 15 belong to a couple, and then lot 16 belongs to someone else. He's the one that's replating, and I have all three signatures and notarized.
Questions for the commissioner?
So they're making some really small lots into some...
Bigger ones.
Little bit bigger lots. Does Joel have to sign that?
She did.
She did.
She did down here. In these instances, instead of the stamp, she did stamp it up here where she signed off on, what, March 2nd of...
This replat has went, I want to just give commends to Mr. Dwight Armour, because this one has gone better than anything that's ever came through my office. He came to me first, before he even started, and then he got his survey done and all the signatures, and came back to me with it all done before he brought it over here. So I was able to call him, tell him it's on the way, and it was the first time it's ever gone so smoothly.
It is helpful when the procedures are followed.
Yes, sir.
Any further comments? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the final plat in Meeks Deepwater Resort, lots 13 and 14 to lot 13-R, and lots 15 and 16 to lot 15-R, located in precinct one, for filing purposes only, and the judge's signature.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the final plat of Meeks Deepwater Resort, creating lots 13R and 15R for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Commissioner Tulley?
Yes, I'll find where my mouse is. The first one we'll do is in the Pinnacle Club. It's taken two lots, combining them into one, in the... Club. It's taking two lots, combining them into one in the... I thought this was the Diamond Point section, but anyway, it's on Diamond Point Drive, taking two lots, combining them into one. And Joy, 911, and all necessary signatures are there.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertained a motion?
I move that we accept the replat of Pinnacle Club Phase Two, Section F, Lot 4 and 5, creating Lot 4-R for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the final replat, Pinnacle Club, Phase Two, Section F, replats of Lot 4 and 5, creating Lot 4-R for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
The next one's in the Sundrift subdivision in the county off of BAf Drive. This gentleman owns four lots, and he's combining them into one lot. And all necessary signatures are here.
Combining four lots to get three-quarters of an acre.
Yep. He owns all of them, and he just wants them underneath one.
Entertained a motion?
Judge, I move we approve the replat of Lot 83, 84, 85, 86, Sundrift subdivision, Sundrift subdivision, Section Two, creating Lot 83-R for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the replat in the Sundrift subdivision, Section Two, of lots 83, 84, 85, and 86, creating Lot 83-R for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court. This replat is in the Browns Landing subdivision. They're taking Lot 58A, Lot 60 and 61, and they're going to combine them into one lot. All necessary signatures are there. Actually, you'll see that there's two different property owners, but they are married, just have two different last names, so...
Questions for the commissioner? Entertained a motion?
Yes, Court. Replay at lots 58A, 60, and 61, creating lots 58-R1 in the Browns Landing subdivision for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the replat in the Browns, Browns Landing, Phase One, establishing Lot 58-R1 for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 22, open and consider bids.
Good morning, Court. I have a bid packet that I need to get approval on. It is for a pug meal mixing box that Commissioner Tulley's needing out in Precinct Two. I believe that everybody got a copy of the bid packet. The plan is, if approved today, we'll run the ad in the paper this Saturday, also the following Saturday, April 4. And then we will set the bid opening on the 12th, and then it'll be presented in court the following Tuesday for award.
Questions, Court? Comments? Commissioner?
Yes. I was thinking that we were, our timeline that we had talked about was opening them on the 4th, April 4.
Okay. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I misread this. Opening on the 4th, and then awards on the...
The 12th?
Yes, sir.
Because we can't open them, or we can't award it on the 5th, can we?
No, sir.
Okay.
I mean, we can open them any, that week of the 4th, any day that week, up until... I have to have all the information turned in for court by noon on Thursday. So we can do it Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, that week of the 4th.
No, I'd rather, in case something happens, we need, I want to open them on the 4th.
Okay. So, yeah, we can do the opening on the 4th, and then the award, I believe that Tuesday, that following Tuesday would be the 12th.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the pug meal mixing box specifications to be put out for bid as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thanks, Court.
Item 23 is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner McCam, to adjourn the meeting. Are there any comments? We'll say we have a workshop scheduled for when? 10? 10 o'clock. We're going to take a little break and then come back and start, so... All those in favor of the motion to adjourn? Passes unanimously. Thank you all for being in attendance today.